Can we have the consent agenda be accepted as presented?
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor. The comment announcement that I have for today is from the Saginaw County Board of Commissioners, Budget Advisory Committee. There is a meeting at 6 o'clock Tuesday, April 23rd. At the courthouse meeting room on High Street. One of the items on the agenda that affects all of us is the public hearing on the county's proposed 2019-20 budget. Is there any public comment? Oh, thank you. I was forgetting, I was so excited about the coming that I forgot about our next meeting, which will be May 13th at 5:30 here in this very spot at the West Coast Town Office. Is there public comment? Okay, seeing none. First item on the agenda is the proposed Bow Rock Road reconstruction. And the impression that we have presented just now is that the project bids were opened and read aloud at 9 o'clock on April 17th here in the town office. The low bidder is Reno's excavation with a total cost of $92,350, which includes ledge removal. And we're asked to award the bid.
We've got a low bid of $92,350 and a high bid of $230,320.
Yeah, there's a higher spread.
Yeah. Everybody's bidding on the same specifications, right?
They all received the same bid packet.
Well then, I guess I'll put a motion on the floor and we can discuss it further if we want. I move to award the bid to the lowest bidder, which will be Reno's excavation.
I second that motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Do we have a timeframe on that? Mr. Reno?
You asking me?
What was the timeframe on this?
I believe it was on the bids. I believe it's August 30th.
So the work will be completed by August 30th?
Yes.
Do you need to vote at all for a couple of days?
Yeah, we'll always have assets for the people that live on that corner. That'll make the job go quicker and that's what kept the spend sound. Leaving it on, it was actually just pretty expensive, more expensive when you have to have flying your standard out.
All right, we've got the control.
Yes, Dan.
This money's on the current budget?
Yes, it is.
And just to be, it was just the, it's not the whole road, it's kind of the center where all the big dips are.
Yeah, basically what the town's doing, they're taking two strips. And let's go and take them, first look, it's called a overall ledge, we're dropping it down two feet. And then we're having two bogs cut, plus an hundred there and that's going 400 feet on both sides of roads and cutting off, so all your water goes down to that pipe and runs out. Which is basically, the cost of this job most is all blasted getting it out of there. So we don't have that issue time after time. Somewhere there's a spring in there and we've got to get it to drain out of the roads. Basically the same thing we did on Long Cove Hill where. It was all engineered by Rob Crew. Looked at it. I thought you did a nice job engineering it. He really went overboard to make sure it got fixed to start. If it doesn't get fixed, then people can ditch.
If it doesn't get fixed, then we're going to write in stone that we're never going to fix this road again?
I don't know about that.
So you said it would be done by August 30th, when you started?
It's very often.
Last time that was done, several years ago, was that job engineered? Do you happen to know?
Yes, I believe it was. It was engineered by Sightline.
It was.
But they tried to put too much in. On that package there, they tried to do the whole road from one end to the other and then all the way down to the bolt lane. So I think they put too much in on it and they did not concentrate enough on that area. They basically just did ditching on the sides. There was no, I mean, they did cut it out, but there was no certain amount, no requirements, you know? Take it out and see what the problem was. So obviously it's broken rock in there, that's a spring or something that's pushing the road up every winter. The water has no place to go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does this current engineer, did he look at the other plans that were done and to see what was planned out before? Do you know if he saw the history of the road?
No, I did not, but I remember saying, I remember bidding that first job.
No, no, I'm saying, does the engineer, Crew, does he know the history of what was done to that?
No, but he knows what the problem of the road was. And I told him that we've already fixed it twice and it needs to be done right now. I mean, that's out of my hands.
No, no, I just didn't know if he knew about the history of it, that's all. He does know some history of it.
Right. He knew it's already been done and we don't want to do it again. So basically, what he planned out was pretty good. We're doing a four-foot cut through there. I mean, if that doesn't take care of it, then we got issues. We're going, it's, I'll be a little bit overkill on that spot, but what do we do when we've already done it once?
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor of awarding the bid to Reno's excavation.
There you go. Be a little back there, I'm here for the road commissioner.
It's a cost to the whole one.
Right.
Okay. Second item on the agenda is the proposed fiscal year 1920 municipal and school budgets. Okay, and is the school committee ready for recommendations?
We do not have a final budget yet. We do have changes from the last time we were here. But when we met last week, there were a couple unknowns. So the board, I think it was two weeks ago, the board thought it was better to wait and we'll run our final budget on Wednesday, which will still keep us in time line with getting warrants printed and approved and everything else. Happy to run through what those changes were since the first proposal, if that's what you'd like to, like us to do.
Yes, I think that would be helpful.
So this is the same budget that the Budget Advisory Committee has just worked with over the last week as well. From what you saw last time around for our first meeting, we're now looking at in this proposed budget a 3.39% increase in budget with a 4.56% increase to local contribution. Reminder that one of the challenges we had with our budget this year is that we had 5% change in costs that were out of our control in that. We had an increase in students going to middle and high school and an increase in tuition at about $100,000 change. And then we also no longer have our tuition credit from RSG1, which is another $100,000 change. So we had about $200,000 that we had to figure out how to make up for within our budget just at the onset. So the changes that you see from the first reading that we did, in regular instruction tuition, we had, it was at 10.28%, now it's, now it's at an 8.45% increase. We had two students who had moved out. We budget for, based on our student population as is, plus give room for three more students. And so because we budget as is, we had two students move out, we've moved them from budget. I did here today, we have two more students moving in next week. So, you know, that's one of those things that it's constantly a moving game, but the board will look at that and make a final decision on where their tuition recommendation is. Other changes that you see is that in article 07, which is student and staff support, the increase is now at .46% other than at 3.57%. That change is related to, I think, decisions made around increases for salaries for non-union employees in that category and then also reductions in insurance based on what employees are taking.
Could you say that again, Dan? You're going off the rails.
I'm sorry. The changes in the student and staff support, those are specific to having a reduction in insurance for people who fall into those categories.
So what was the percentage change?
It was at 3.57% increase. Now it's a .46% increase overall, $925 from last year.
Now before you move on, back to the regular instruction tuition.
Yes.
What was the percentage change from?
It was 10.28, now it's at 8.45.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at both system administration and school administration, there is a negative increase or decrease. It was at minus 1.87, now it's at minus 1.93 for system administration. It was at minus .34%, now it's at .58%. Those are because again, decisions were made by the board around non-union employees raises and then there's changes that ends up being reductions in insurance in those categories. And then operation and maintenance from the prior budget, actually there's no change from there. But areas that we still need to discuss are operation and maintenance because we had some unknowns around the sprinkler system and whether we wanted to make the changes that were recommended by the budget committee there. Some choices that have to be made in that area. We also, in terms of the carryover, still need to make a final determination on whether or not more carryovers can be added to the budget to help offset the local contribution portion. So we also have one more staffing review that we'll do in regular instruction on Wednesday to determine if there's any other reductions that can happen there. So those are the pieces that are still on the table for Wednesday. We anticipate that we'll be able to have a final budget by then.
Any questions? Any further questions from the assembled group? Yes.
Do we know what 4.56% represents to the average taxpayer household, is that? What would the, what would the different homeowners feel there? What, what does that, how does that affect the taxpayer?
It depends how much we utilize through surplus and other revenue streams. So that's not something that's easily answered right now. Have to take the budget as a whole, the entire town, and then figure out what's approved and how we cover the cost of our appropriations. It won't necessarily all be from taxation. A portion of it, maybe more than last year, could be taken from surplus or from other revenue streams. So not easily answered tonight.
But since with these numbers, which are very fluid at this point, represents approximately .2 of a mil or $143,000 told us. So .2 of a mil, approximately. But then we don't know what the basis of a mil is going to be yet either because... So everything is quite fluid right now. Nothing comes together until the very last minute, unfortunately.
Once you have it, think you have it together, it changes.
And then it changes. We live with it and love it for a day.
Just to clarify, I don't think the budget committee recommended the change to the sprinkler system. One of the members suggests we should look at it, but we didn't adjust changes at this point.
If there are no further comments, thank you. We'll continue the rounds.
Thank you.
From the Municipal Budget Advisory Committee. Do you have some updated figures?
Yes. In case I miss something, I hope somebody will correct me. We didn't make too many changes on the salary section of the budget. We wanted to give all the town employees a 2.5% increase in their wages. That's a polar number, I believe. Except the town administrator, town treasurer, and town clerk, we wanted to go with 3% raise for them. Yes, and on Hydro Master, we wanted to bump that up to 10%.
Because you tell me you're grossly unpaid.
Well, that, many years, we've not accepted rates.
I know.
So.
Yes.
And at some point, Joe, when we're doing this anymore, he would want to give up somewhere, anywhere it might be.
Yes, we do need to keep inching that one up. Because right now, Joe does it more as a volunteer job than as a professional position.
On this...
Thanks to John.
On the Swatman's contingency fund, we wanted to keep it at $5,000 and not $10,000. We want to make sure that the fire protection payroll for the fire department volunteers is also exclusive at 2.5%.
What was that going to be?
The incentive pay for the payment.
Okay.
Stipend.
Yeah, we want to have that at the same 2.5% increase. And on some of these wages where they get a, some kind of stipend beyond the normal base wage, we want to make sure the 2.5% is on the base wage, not the total, because they receive extra money for whatever fines or mileage. On the compost recycling disposal, at this point in time, we did not see any sense of having that compost system set up. The town does not have a lot of neighborhoods or patent buildings where you can compost if they wish to. And we can't even get half the town to recycle paper, let up there for compost. And the RATU are receiving centers of bath that they want to really recycle those, that compost material. So that was, I'd be $2,800 for that. This year, our last several years, we've put off road work. And Steve has come in with a long list of road repairs. We decided this year we leave the recommendations on the road repairs, which will just before town meeting, we'll meet the 1st of June, hoping that the town may receive some more revenue sharing money or some more school funding. But we put these roads off for several years and we've got to invest money in the roads this year. So right now, it's kind of all on the table and see how the numbers fill up sometime around the 1st of June. Hopefully the state will reimburse a lot more revenue sharing and I'm sure we'll get more school funding.
I'm sure. Steve, what are your, what are your favorite proposals for road repairs? This kind of hit the highest spot.
Well, basically, the biggest, the biggest concern I have right now is the end of the crossfire road through the fields and stuff. The road basically pushing right into the ditches and we're going to lose that section of road soon if we don't wrap something with it. That's one of the biggest concerns I have right now. We're actually getting to get the Bow Rock Road down, so I'm happy with that. We had some other stuff that I'd like to do on the Bow Rock Tube down by the gold lane and around that corner. I'd like to do some hammering in the town to get some of these ditches to run properly. And now our ditches, like on places like that, that's not low enough, so the water wants to go across the road, it has no chance to build up at all. It just, once it freezes, it's going right down below the road over there. So that's, that's a concern. The Austin Road, I mean, we can, I have paved it down on the Austin Road, but I think that we could probably wait and see what's going to happen with that culvert. I think that's going to have something that's going to be coming up, it's going to be a digress, that's taken care of. I can see bringing that part of that road up some and work on that. I got a lot of little things I'd like to do down on the Bird Point Road. People down there are very nice, they had a lot of concerns, they bring a lot of questions up to me and they're paying attention to the road, so maybe I should pay a little bit more attention to the road. So I'd like to do, you know, a few more things down there to keep, keep things rolling. We just, we just haven't had the money to do anything major because we hadn't had it. But now it's getting to the point where we've got to find it, we've got to do it.
Minor repairs are becoming major repairs.
Exactly. I mean, it's, it's coming to a point now, it's okay, you know, do we want to lose the road and then have to come up, try to find $200,000 to $300,000 to do it all at once? Or do we want to try to, you know, kick this in the bud a little bit? So I did go a little high on my budget because I could see that we could spend all that and we needed to do that. Get things shipped back up, you know, so because the more it goes down and you keep driving over it, so you figure you're driving down a road like this and then all of a sudden it drops down, so all your weight shifts. So that puts more pressure on the spot that's already been broke down, pretty much. So it just keeps progressing, just like a pothole, it just keeps progressively getting worse. So if you get them shipped back up, you keep your vehicles on a level on the road, it saves it.
And where are we on Spino Road?
Spino Road? Basically, patching.
We're still in the permitting process, is, is, that's where we are?
Yeah, yeah. Patching is from ditching down till the end. So as far as the culvert, we're still working on that. Which, I don't know. I, what I've seen so far is I'm not a fan of it, so.
Okay. Yes, Dan?
One other minor change that I skipped, or should I get it out? On the fuel for, I think it was for...
Hydro Master.
Hydro Master. We always bet that, like $77 this year, including the notes. So we should bump that up to reach $550 for fuel. So we'll, we will meet again the 1st of June, look at the budget again, try to keep a rate increase reasonable. Right now it's probably around what, a dollar? To the thousand increase? So we'll try to keep that in mind as well as what Stephen needs for the roads.
Okay. So the, the warrant won't have a specific number?
Yes, it could, because if you vote reduce it, you reduce at town meeting.
Okay.
We will make a recommendation verbally at town meeting, once you get more numbers from the town.
Any more questions? We don't have to approve the recommendations at this point.
You don't have to too.
Right.
Would be great if you could do it May 13th.
Yes, because we need to get, we need to get... Okay, let's have some time to study.
Sure.
So the bottom line for all the budget?
The bottom line, there's actually been some additional for, toward the bottom line, this does not include the increase in the lighting projects, the anticipated increase in lighting projects.
You mean the LED thing?
Yeah. So there was an additional, from what I read from the papers, there's an additional $15,000.
No.
That's what I read.
Now we got to double check that, because the total is now 63?
I can go get the papers.
We'll double check that, but as far as I know, it was, town office went up $300 after offsets from energy main, efficiency main. And the school was up about five, I think, $5,000, I think, to $63,000.
I could have misinterpreted something that I saw, if I could. I can get, either get it now or we can address it later.
A few minutes later.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we're increasing, we're increasing approximately $450,000, right?
That's what we have.
Round number?
That's what we have.
Y'all have been working hard, thank you. Appreciate your work. And we will deliberate on the 13th to make the recommendations for the town board. Okay, what's next? Other, do we have another?
I don't have any other. Happy Earth Day, everybody.
Your favorite holiday?
It is.
Yeah. If there's no other. Wait, what?
Other means we're going to say something, right? Well, quick. Culvert at the bottom of Bow Rock is completely full and not flowing, did you know that?
Beaver let it all band up.
And?
And we fixed it all, wanted to, we also scored down there with this little excavator so we don't break any others out.
Perfect. Thank you.
What's dampened?
Beaver's.
Beaver's.
Well, they're making a comeback.
Yeah. They have, they're making a lake. Trouble is, where it's backed up there on the Bow Rock Road, it backs it up all the way over to...
The highway.
The school.
Yeah.
You know? So it's starting to show. First the guy called the state and the state came down and told, no, the water flows north. The water does not flow north. He said, the guy from the state told me there was no culvert underneath the road. Well, there is a culvert. I told him, yes, I... I told him, yes, I, I, I'm aware of it. I said, I've been just waiting to find the right side machine, they get down in there. Because I already pulled it out last fall. They did it last fall. Awesome. And we drained it then. And when it comes out, if you're not careful, it could take the road out and my driveway and the hill road. That's where all the water heads.
Did you put a sign up saying, no beaver allowed here?
I think what we might have to do is talk to the animal control officer and see if we can get a beaver trap or get somebody in there and remove the beaver.
That's gonna have to be the state, because unless somebody's made pets of them, they're wild.
Well.
Yeah, been trapping the season ended April first.
By the state concern.
Yeah, but if it's a nuisance, you can get a special permit to trap them out of season.
Just have to jump through a few hoops, so maybe it's the normal trapping season.
Well, yes, it was up the same height last fall, um, and we went down there. I grabbed my excavator and thumb and threw it out and she cleaned every soft rate up really nice. But it was just starting to crush my road down that end, so we're trying to release it slowly. And then I went down to check the hill road, those two culverts that we put in down there were just taking it, so.
Yeah.
And the reason I didn't bring that earlier, because I was waiting for the snow to melt off and trying to keep things. Because it's been gone probably for the last month now, and I've known that. But I'm just waiting not to make other problems now through there. Now the ice is gone and there won't be dams and backups, it'll go.
Maybe you could take a, um, a, a video of a stiff moving down, not north? So that you can show the state which way that runs?
I think if you just.
Might take five years for those who have lived in the area.
Well, basically what the, and the thing they'll do is once it's back down, we'll over and take a picture of the, uh, culvert that's all crossed the state road and just update it. I mean, the people who work for the state now, they're out in Scarborough, in the office. So they know, you know, all the old timers are gone.
Yeah.
They knew all the little catches and, and stuff like that, so. So basically it's that now for the whole new generation that does not know anything about where the stuff is, so.
But they're all paid really well.
Yeah.
Perhaps the, um, elementary school would like to do a, uh, learning expedition on beavers since they're now our newest wildlife in the neighborhood.
I would ask that, um, kindergartners do pets or pests since the spring expedition.
You give my water a rabbit, so.
Is there other others? Then, um, shall we entertain a motion to adjourn?
No.
No.
Executive session.
Oh, well then let's entertain a motion for an executive session.
I make motion that we request to enter an executive session pursuant to federal one, named by statute and be section four oh five six A for the purposes of discussing personnel issues.
All in favor of entering executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel issues? We are no difference, I'm trying to split up the.
Yo, I want to stay.
Keith, are there still beavers out on the park back on? Where?